Today is Thursday, August 8th, 2024 at 7:00 PM. We're going to call the meeting to order. The Zoom chat will not be monitored. Participants who wish to speak must raise their hand icon until the chair asks them to unmute. Note, this meeting is being recorded for live broadcast and televised and replayed by Bourne TV. If anyone else is audio or visual recording, they must acknowledge so at this time. No indication of anybody? Okay, we have one agenda item, and that is Ocean Pines Wildwood Stormwater Peer Review Report.
Brian Wallace with J.C. Engineering. We performed the stormwater analysis at the request of the Bourne Planning Board for the Ocean Pines Drive development. I prepared a presentation that sort of summarizes some of the key findings and a methodology of how we went through the assessment. The report itself is available online. I'm sure everyone is very familiar with the project if you're here tonight. So I'll just go through this slideshow here. So just a brief project summary here. Again, we were retained by the Town of Bourne to perform the comprehensive review of the hydrologic conditions associated with Ocean Pines development. That would be the southern portion of Ocean Pines Drive, all of Alpine Circle, and all of Alpine Lane. This was requested following ongoing flooding and stormwater-related issues documented and witnessed by residents. And upon completion of the assessment, we'd be able to identify any deficiencies in existing stormwater infrastructure, deviations from design plans that might exist, and other issues that might result in the flooding that's been occurring. And using our best available resources, we'd be able to construct a hydrologic model of the site to understand the extents of the flooding and to be able to propose possible remedial actions that could be taken. So this is just an aerial map that's also included in our report that shows the limits of where we focused on for the study. Again, just the southern portion of Ocean Pines Drive, pretty much south of, I believe it's 19 and 20 Ocean Pines, all of Alpine Circle, all of Wildwood Lane. Again, I'm sure everyone's pretty familiar with the site history, so I'll be brief with this, but the initial subdivision was laid out in 1987. The construction of it commenced around 1988, 1989, and by 2001, all of the roadways had been constructed, including Wildwood Lane. The single-family residential lots shown on those original plans, 31 through 60, were occupied and constructed on. Wildwood Lane would remain vacant until there was a transfer of ownership in 2006. Throughout the construction, the developer had petitioned to the town numerous, a few times, as far as changes to the roadway width, sidewalk, berm configuration. It looked like all of those requests were granted. And there were modifications to the Ocean Pines Drive entrance basin, which is by Route 3A in 1998. January 13th, 2000, the planning board voted to release the remaining surety for the development, indicating that all work had been completed to the satisfaction and standards set forth in the subdivision rules and regulations at the time. May 30th, 2007, Ocean Pines LLC, who purchased the Wildwood lots, petitioned to amend the special permit in order to modify the condominium units that would be constructed on the site and subsequent site plans for those individual lots, starting with Lot 66 in 2016, would be submitted to the town, and construction on those vacant lots would commence. So that brings us to today, where there's been significant flooding documented primarily in the vicinity of Lots 45 and 46, which are 5 and 7 Alpine Circle, respectively. The earliest documentation of flooding can be seen in a letter that was written to the Town Planning Board from the Superintendent of Public Works. That was dated November 6, 2002, where they had witnessed some of the flooding that is occurring in the areas that it's occurring today. Again, more recent flooding documented by residents on Alpine Circle, following those severe storms that occurred in September 2021, August 22, and September 23. The Wildwood Lane condominium residents also have documented high flood levels in the constructed stormwater basin that's located between, behind 12 Ocean Pines Drive and flooding near or within the condominium units. So as far as our analysis goes, we applied a few different methods to do that. We reviewed all the documents, plans, and reports that are on file with the town. We sent a survey crew out there and did an on-the-ground survey of some areas of the site, and we performed a visual inspection of drainage networks and structures. We went out there with a camera that was able to look inside structures and through pipes. We also observed and documented a short but intense rain event on July 13th of this year. Using certain, you know, data methods, we were able to construct a hydrologic model of the site through MasterIS. We used LiDAR topography, which is available from NOAA, soil maps from USDA, and again, on-the-ground survey and record as-built plans. We were able to build a pretty thorough model of the site to really understand what was going on out there. So some of our key findings, we were able to confirm that the location and width of Ocean Pines Drive, Alpine Circle, and Wildwood Lane were constructed in substantial compliance with the original subdivision plans and subsequent approved modifications that were granted by the Town Planning Board. Ocean Pines Drive and Alpine Circle, we observed that there was a Cape Cod berm, generally two inches high, 12 inches wide, and the road was crowned from .4 to 4%. It varied from where we gathered that data. Wildwood Lane, the Cape Cod berm height varies, and in some areas was almost nonexistent, and the road crown appeared to be inadequate as it exists today. The current stormwater standards were not in effect until 1994, so when this development was originally permitted in 1987, those current stormwater standards did not exist. There were local requirements at the time those may have been met. The drainage infrastructure within Ocean Pines Drive, Alpine Circle, and Wildwood Lane appear to have been constructed in substantial compliance with the approved 1987 development plan and against subsequent approved modifications. Wildwood Lane, the stormwater basin there was modified and expanded during construction of the condominiums. And we also noted that catch basin 3, drain manholes 1, 2, and 3, which are shown and labeled on some of the plans, specifically Exhibit F, were paved over and not accessible. Those are all located on Ocean Pines Drive. The drainage infrastructure in Alpine Circle, while constructed in compliance with the design plans, we found to be significantly undersized and unable to mitigate the amount of runoff that is generated and directed towards those structures. And we believe this is the primary cause of that flooding that's occurring in the vicinity of 5 and 9 Alpine Circle. Continuing on that, there are deficiencies we noted for the Wildwood roadway, and those can exacerbate the flooding conditions in that location, which have been documented. The stormwater management system at the entrance of Ocean Pines Drive appear to be adequately sized for the runoff, estimated quantity of runoff entering the system. While we were reviewing the structures, we didn't observe any significant buildup of sediment or debris in any pipe systems, and the majority of the pipes we were able to inspect appeared to be in good condition. The drainage system to the north of 19 and 20 Ocean Pines Drive is not hydraulically connected to the system we reviewed, therefore would not be contributing to the Ocean Pines Drive basin or Alpine Circle. And structures and pipes in Ocean Pines Drive and Wildwood Lane appear to be capable of conveying the stormwater as we analyzed with current stormwater standard practices. The Ocean Pines Drive drainage system was designed with the intention to accommodate a portion of runoff generated on Wildwood Lane and the associated condominiums. That's based on reviewing the 1987 plan. We were able to identify that. In the Wildwood Basin, we had modeled to determine the anticipated flood elevations, and during the 100-year storm, 24-hour storm event, which is about 7.46 inches of rain in 24 hours, the basin would be expected to fill up to an elevation that's about half of a foot below the nearest building, which is 12A through F, Ocean Pines Drive, it should read there. We also noted that there were dedicated roof drywells for Wildwood Lane, and those appeared to have been undersized, and they do not provide an overflow mechanism that would divert the water away from the building, which is why some of those residents might be experiencing that flooding around the perimeter of the building and near some window wells. So here's just a map of the area by 7 and 9 Alpine Circle. I know it's a little tough to see from the audience, but the green line represents what you would see during a 25-year storm event. And when I say 25, or 10, 25, 100-year storm events, these are frequencies that a storm of that intensity would occur every 25 years or every 100 years. It doesn't mean we get those storms exactly 25 years apart, but it's a basis of how we design stormwater systems today. And the green would represent actually the 10-year storm, the yellow would represent the 25-year storm, and the red would represent a 100-year storm, which again is 7.46 inches in 24 hours. This is the Wildwood Lane basin located between 12 Ocean Pines Drive and, I believe that's 4, Wildwood Lane. So again, those dashed lines represent the flood levels associated with those storm events. This is all in the report that is provided. And this is the basin by the entrance of Ocean Pines Drive and Route 3A. So as part of the report, we did want to recommend some actions that can be taken to help the issue out there. First and most importantly, there needs to be additional stormwater storage provided by 7 and 9 Alpine Circle or a method of reducing the contributing runoff at that low spot. This is a conceptual plan we put together as part of the report, which would be just one method of providing that additional storage. This particular system would be able to accommodate a 25-year storm event, which I believe is right around six inches in 24 hours. That would consist of a new system of eight leaching pits with an above-ground basin associated with that. It also involves some modifications to the catch basins that are up the road from Alpine Circle. So again, these two systems were significantly undersized with the amount of runoff entering them. So at a certain point, those catch basins further up Alpine Circle would also not be able to handle any additional runoff, and that would run down the road towards the low point. Some additional recommendations, we would recommend uncovering those catch basin and drain manholes in Ocean Pines Drive, bring those to road grade to be able to look into the structure, inspect them, make sure those pipes and structures are in good shape. Convert the catch basins that are located immediately at the intersection of Ocean Pines Drive and Wildwood Lane to, from a single grate to a double grate catch basin. Those are located at a low point, so it's receiving flow from both sides. And generally, you design those nowadays as a double grate. We'd also recommend increasing the height of the Cape Cod berm and driveways near 11 and 15 Ocean Pines Drive, which would prevent overflow at this location, implementing a gutter line along Ocean Pines Drive at the intersection with Alpine Circle. And then one last note, just providing a riprap energy dissipator that was shown on the 1998 design plans at the head wall at the Ocean Pines Drive basin. In the next slide, we'll visually show all of those points. Again, here at the north, now it shows up so up here. These are the two catch basins right at Wildwood Lane and Ocean Pines Drive that we'd recommend converting to double catch basin grates. Here, we would recommend enhancing the Cape Cod berm and those driveways that would prevent any, or at least reduce the possibility of overflow that would continue down gradient there towards 7 and 9 Alpine Circle. And then a bit further down the road, where Ocean Pines Drive and Alpine Circle intersect, there is no effective gutter line or berm preventing runoff from Ocean Pines Drive entering Alpine Circle there. We'd also recommend that the berms and roadway crown on Wildwood Lane be corrected to ensure that runoff is not bypassing the drainage structures as it does today. I understand that there's still top coat to be applied, so that would be the opportunity to do it, in our opinion. There would be no additional runoff from Lot 61, Wildwood Lane, be directed towards the existing drainage system, which I believe has been worked out with the town's consulting engineer, Merrill Engineering, as they reviewed that lot specifically. We'd recommend modifying the roof drywells for the Wildwood Lane condominiums to provide an overflow outlet, so the flooding doesn't occur by the building. We'd also recommend a long-term operation and maintenance plan be developed for the Ocean Pines Drive system, which, as far as we understand, doesn't currently exist. It's unclear if those structures have been looked at or inspected in 20 years since that road is private. And then we'd also recommend a record as-built of all the stormwater infrastructure associated with Wildwood Lane and the Wildwood Lane condominiums, and that should be provided to the town, to residents, and the party who would be responsible for implementing that plan. And that would be the end of my short version of the report. And again, more information, explanations, and exhibits are provided in that report, which is available to everyone. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions from anybody from the board? Anybody from the audience?
Actually, this is Liz. I have a question.
Go ahead, Liz.
Okay, number 16 in your findings, you talk quite a bit about the Wildwood Lane basin and its capacity not being enough for 100-year, 24-hour storm. Do any of the recommendations that you're making for remedial action address that?
We didn't recommend anything for that beyond just making sure that the long-term and operation maintenance is maintained for that system. You know, over time, if things aren't inspected, cleaned out, that system would probably exhibit higher flood elevations over time. So best management practices would require that be part of a long-term and operation maintenance plan.
Thank you. As a layperson, when I read that paragraph, I thought, oh my God, but I guess it's not exactly that. So, thank you.
Yep.
Thanks, Liz. Anything else, Liz?
No.
Okay. From the audience?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My name is David Udy. I represent Hebb Builders, and I just wanted to emphasize and kind of go back as to the history as to why we came here. And, you know, there are a lot of people, there were several people in the public that were making significant accusations against my client and significant accusations against the current build-out of what's going on. And my client has endured those accusations and been at some of these meetings and hired me to come to these meetings. And now we've had two peer-review engineers look at both the current remainder of the project, Lot 61, and looked at the rest of the infrastructure. And the main conclusion that I want to highlight from the report that was summarized here, it's number, paragraph 7 on the report, it says that "The drainage infrastructure in Alpine Circle, which my client had absolutely nothing to do with, didn't touch, was completed decades ago. While constructed in compliance with the 1987 design, is significantly undersized and unable to mitigate the amount of runoff generated in the contributed catchment areas. The engineer believes that this is the primary cause of the flooding that occurs in the vicinity of Number 5 to 9 Alpine." So that has now been confirmed, that this area, this land on Alpine, is not designed and built in accordance with current standards. And the people who own that land, it's not my client, it's the very people who are coming before this board with their complaints about these issues. They own the roads. They own the fee in the road, not my client. My client has never owned it. My client has never performed any construction on it whatsoever. What I do take away from the report is that one thing that my client can control and do, two things actually, is the existing mitigation that he's going to do that Merrill Engineers has recommended for Lot 61. So that's in progress, and we're doing that. And also, once construction is finished, to properly crown the roadway on Wildwood Lane to correct that runoff, which is another recommendation in the report, and we want to do that. That's going to be done when construction is completed. But I just want to underscore here that the main issues on Ocean Pines Drive and Alpine Circle have nothing to do with my client. There are issues on those roadways that have to be corrected to deal with stormwater. There's low points there that have to be dealt with. And with no disrespect to any of the people who have, I think in good faith, brought concerns to this board, they own those roadways, those people. They own that land. And I would just caution this board in the future, you guys know your jobs and you know what to do, but it's important to have public hearings and to have situations where people can voice their concerns. But this has gone on for months and months and months, and I think if a public, a member of the public, I've served on a planning board for over a decade, and if a member of the public has a concern about something, has a complaint about something, they should have to come forth at some point with some kind of engineering expert to justify their complaints after a while before this developer who's trying to build affordable housing in this town, who has built hundreds of units in this town, including many affordable units, and is continuing to do so, to have to deal with these accusations. So I think it's important to be able to have a forum for this, but this report confirms that, and you can put it to the engineer, don't take it from me, that the vast, vast majority of the problems here that have led to the complaints that have been articulated to this board have come from systemic issues on their land. And my client is fully committed to completing the work that Merrill Engineers recommended for Lot 61. We're completely on board with that. We appreciate that. We're going to complete, we have put a performance bond in place for Wildwood Lane. We're going to complete the crowning on that road, so it's not contributing at all to the runoff in these other areas. But the report underscores that the main problems here are endemic to the land that these folks own. And if they want to correct the problem, well, they need to incur, they need to come up with their own plan to fix their own property, and it's not something that my client ever had anything to do with. This report concludes that my client came on the scene years after that infrastructure was built out and approved by this board. So I would just want to cite that for the record and reiterate that my client is here in good faith through me and will complete those items, but I'd like to kind of put this to rest at this point. And if people have continued complaints, they need to hire their own experts and fix it themselves. Thank you.
Thank you. Catherine, did you have something?
I do. I do. I have a question, actually. I have two. First of all, I wanted just to go back to the presentation, and I wanted to understand substantial compliance under key findings. Can we go back to that slide, please?
So we mentioned earlier than earlier on in the key findings as well.
Can you tell me, can you tell me what substantial compliance means?
Sure. Yeah. So we looked at the original design plans, and then again, some of the approved modifications that the planning board at the time, which this occurred, you know, like 1992, 1995. And as far as the, so as far as, I'm sorry, so the location and width of the ways here at Number 1, the location of the roadway, the width of the pavement, the berms, the sidewalk location, for those three roadways, all appear to be in approximately the location they should be, right? You know, in any situation, construction never really perfectly follows down to a T what the design plans call.
Okay, I was talking for one second, right? Just because, so if they appear to be, right? And I'm only asking this, I'm an ISO 27001 certified auditor, so for me, in my business, I can never say substantial compliance. I need to say the product's 100% compliant. So I guess I'm wondering, you're saying substantial, which is, again, in my mind, is room for interpretation there. And I have, you know, I've been there on that site firsthand. I've talked to residents. I've seen the damage. I understand what happened. So I, you know, I'd like to just understand a little bit more about this.
Yeah, I mean, as I said before, you know, it's substantial compliance does leave room because there is tolerance in construction, right? In some places, a roadway might be 26 and 1/2 feet wide, in some places it might be 25 and 1/2 feet where it's supposed to be 26. And that's what we mean by substantially compliant. And you would, you know, upon completion of a development, you would bring, you know, a plan to an approving authority such as a planning board, and they would deem it substantially compliant with the design plans. So that's standard language, I think, you know, when it comes to dealing with developments, design drawings, as-built drawings, and ultimately sign off by the town.
Okay. And again, in my, you know, when I do hotel construction, if it's not, the as-built has to be, I mean, the site service, the as-built, it has to be, right? It can't, we can't guess at it. So this is just, you know, I'm just learning about that, so okay. Thank you.
Thanks, Catherine. Anybody else up on Zoom?
Chairman, you have a chance.
Anybody else is on Zoom?
I don't think so.
Okay. Can you drop your hand icon, Catherine? Thank you. Go ahead, Doc.
Yeah. Question about Alpine Drive. Is it knowable the volume of water that's being contributed coming down Alpine Drive versus what's coming down the driveway of 15 Ocean Pines? Because we've seen the videos, and I have to say, it looks like, that driveway looks like an emergency spillway for Wildwood Lane.
Right.
And I guess the question, were there complaints before Wildwood Lane development took off?
Yeah, I mean, from what we can tell, there was the one complaint that's on record, at least, back in 2002, which was a letter from DPW Director at the time to the planning board about flooding that had been occurring in that location. And this was after Wildwood Lane had been built out, but before any condominiums were built on the site.
The road had been constructed, but the structures weren't up.
That's correct, yes. It looked like it had, the road remained vacant for several years before there was a transfer in ownership there. It's difficult to sometimes quantify, you know, just how much flooding is occurring because of a failure of structures, you know, like on Wildwood Lane, for example, you know, we noted that there was bypass on these catch basins. It's hard to really quantify that exact number, but you do know that it occurs. And the best thing we can do is sort of separate those two things out. And the best thing we can do is sort of separate those two things out. And what we did is analyze Alpine Circle and the area of runoff that's supposed to be going to there only. And then we also looked at the deficiencies associated with Wildwood Lane. So we're not trying to take away one with the other there.
Thank you.
Did you have something, Dan?
Not yet.
Anybody else on the board? Hey, from the audience, Tom? Up to the lectern, please.
Hi, my name's Robert Rand. I live at 9B Wildwood Lane, and I'm a member of the Ocean Pines Condominium Association Board of Trustees. There were a few things I wanted to touch on. First of all, I wanted to ask Mr. Wallace, Brian, did your study look at what impact putting the crown, the higher crown on Wildwood Lane would have on the drainage system, particularly the detention pond behind building 12? Because it'll mean that more water, stormwater will be going into the drainage system there, right? Can you explain that? Great.
Yeah, sure. So this kind of goes back to, to your point about sort of separating things out to, to really understand. So, so when we modeled the basin behind Wildwood Lane, we did assume everything was working properly and that all that runoff should be captured in those catch basins in Wildwood Lane and would go to that basin, so.
With the higher crown?
With the higher crown.
Okay.
Brian, can you come a little closer to the mic there, so?
Sure, yeah.
Thanks.
Did it catch that word?
It's not for us, it's for the TV.
Okay.
Yeah. Okay.
Yep.
Thank you. Second thing I want to touch on was because the, Mr. Wallace's JC Engineering Report was just posted a week ago, and because of prior commitments that our own engineer, Carlos Sculte, has, he wasn't able to look at the engineering report until today, but he was able to do a very preliminary review of it, assessment of it. And I just wanted to touch on a couple of things that, that he said. Mostly, he reinforces a lot of the findings that the JC Engineering Report had. He said, just to quote a few things from his, from his memo here, "Overall, it looks like a thorough review of the history and materials provided to date, based on the information they reference as the basis of their review. It may not touch on each and every aspect of our findings, but they captured a fair amount of the issues we identified." By "we," he means CEC, his engineering firm. Just a couple of the highlights here. He says that JC indicates that the Wildwood Basin includes ponding up the back doors of some of the condo units with less than six inches of freeboard, and there is no emergency overflow. We generally agree, but would like to verify the analysis to confirm we had the same flooding events, sorry, excuse me, flooding extents. And then he continues, "We would recommend that something be done about the lack of overflow paths that protect the homes with some degree of freeboard, but unfortunately, there did not appear to be any recommendations to address this in the JC report." Also, JC indicates the drainage system in Ocean Pine, well, I won't do this one, it's highly technical. I have copies of this, which I can distribute to you afterwards. I'm no engineer and it's hard for me to decipher what he's talking about with all these technical terms. The last thing I want to mention in terms of remedial action that Mr. Sculte recommended is, he says, "We would recommend adding a remedial action item for the Wildwood Basin that provides an emergency overflow pathway and would allow for additional freeboard to the residential homes, making them better protected from flooding impacts." So I will, I can hand this out to you after, after I finish here. And then one other thing I wanted to touch on, and actually, Mr. Sculte touches on this too, he mentions the Merrill Engineering Report here, and he, he also indicates that the notice of intent has not yet been filed with the EPA, which is something that I have mentioned to all of you also. And according to the EPA, I looked up on their website, and according to the EPA, the operator of a new site, i.e. a, a site where construction activities commence on or after February 17, 2022, shall submit, the deadline for submitting an NOI is at least 14 calendar days before commencing construction activities. Now, as a layman, that sort of makes sense to me, that a builder would get a permit from the EPA before doing the building, not after months and months of already doing building. So again, I just wanted to bring that to your attention, something that I've been tracking, and apparently our engineer also has been tracking that. And then finally, oh, one other quick question. Mr. Wallace mentioned that his firm was retained by the town of Bourne. I'm just wondering, did Bourne pay for this review?
Yes, they did.
Yeah? Okay, great.
And it wasn't cheap.
It wasn't cheap.
Yeah, your tax dollars at work.
Yep.
I know Merrill was about 6,000. Do you know what this one was?
I, I don't have the exact figure, but I do know that it's, it's expensive.
Yeah, yeah. So I just wanted, before I finish.
The whole report is, as you probably know, I think is about 112 pages or something along that line.
Yeah.
So, yeah, there's a lot of work there.
Yeah. Well, it was bigger than Merrill's, for sure, because it's a bigger area, yeah. So before I finish, just wanted to make a comment. All right. When I bought my half million dollar condo, not exactly affordable, about two years ago, I assumed, like many of my neighbors, I believe, that the town's licensing enforcement and regulatory agencies ensured that the project was designed and built to proper standards. Now that the new peer review shows that it was not, I'm just wondering, what recourse do we as unsuspecting buyers and owners have? Will the town hold the developer accountable for mitigating these deficiencies that are outlined in the report? So I wanted to leave you with, with that thought, and I think a lot of, a lot of the people in Ocean Pines Condominiums would, would agree with me. Thank you.
Thank you. Tom?
Hi, Tom Leclerc, 7 Alpine Circle. And I'd first like to thank JC Engineering for doing the survey on the whole peer review area, and thank you, town, for, for taking care of that event for us. However, I'd like to go into some details as far as what the findings are from the review as well. And, you know, as far as the accusations that Mr., the attorney over here put on forth for the residents of Alpine Circle, none of the flooding, the roadways went in in 2001. The first reporting flooding in that area was November 6, 2002. I can do the math pretty easily. 2002 comes after 2001. So the roadway at Wildwood Lane was already in place. From what I understand, they did make accommodations and increase the drainage in accordance to the standards in the waterways through Alpine Circle. We don't flood at Alpine Circle until we receive the stormwater from Wildwood Lane. And that's documented on every one of those floods that I've sent, in a, I've supported with video footage and everything else to the town. Mr. Udi is trying to tell us that they don't flood because of us? I strongly beg to differ, and I'm sure everybody in this room can agree with me except for As far as page, the pages of the reports go, you know, I just want to just reinforce what I just said. It clearly states that on page one and two of 19, it says they, they had a permit that extended some construction on Alpine's, on Ocean Pines Drive. By 2001, all roadways appeared to be constructed, including Wildwood, including Wildwood Lane. No reports of anything was reported until November 6 of 2002. On page two of 19, it says on May 30 of 2007, there was a special permit in order to modify the condominium units, and they also had a lot drainage analysis for Wildwood Lane, was also prepared and submitted, dated May 31 of 2007, and by, prepared by Existing Grade Incorporated. The analysis references several catch areas and stormwater systems, however, the plan, previously referenced, does not show the locations of these systems. So I guess the question is, where are they? If it doesn't show it. Now, correct me if I'm wrong, but isn't that where the ownership transferred to, to have construction? So if that's the case, then where is that special permit showing that? And where are these catch, catch basins for that matter?
The catch basins that were paved over?
I don't know. That's what it says. They couldn't find them.
Right.
So I guess the question is, where are they? Do they even exist? I mean, they've already proven that they've missed a lot of stuff on lots 62 through 66. Now, if you want to go to lot 61, looks like they're getting ready to put asphalt up there, but we can talk about that a little later in this, in this presentation, because I got even bigger concerns with that. Pages 10, 11, and 14 are my other little pieces that I'd like to talk about. Under the report findings, lines three and four, Wildwood Lane Cape Cod Berms are variable in height and could be considered negligible to be the function of runoff in certain areas. Furthermore, the roadway crown pitch is inadequate, and runoff will bypass the catch basins. The results in this significant more stormwater entering the catch basins CB6 and CB7 on Ocean Pines Drive. The Massachusetts stormwater standards were not in effect until 1994. Therefore, the project may not have been subjected to standards at that time of permitting. Local requirements, if applicable, may have been met at the time of the permitting afterwards. So May 30 of 2007 was when these other permits were granted, these special permits. Now, that's seven years? No, I'm sorry, that's 13 years later. So why didn't they, if they did all this permitting then, and the stormwater permits were being forced then, why didn't this get acted on then? And I guess that brings the next question. We have a stormwater committee here in town, do we not?
I don't think so.
It's, it's in the conservation section of the town of Bourne. And there's, there's one, two, three, four, five members on it. I, I'm asking the question, because it says they're there.
Where are you reading that?
Where is that from the website?
If you go onto the conservation area of the stormwater, in the stormwater section of conservation on the town of Bourne's website.
You mean the Conservation Commission?
Yes.
Oh.
So there, so that's probably a sub.
A stormwater committee that belongs on it. Am I, am I correct?
So it's probably a subcommittee of the Conservation Commission, I would think. But I don't, I don't know.
So I guess maybe the next time we have another meeting, can we have them present?
Mr. Chairman, can I?
Yeah, go ahead.
Furthermore, on page.
She's, she's got some more on that.
Yeah, under the stormwater standards in the zoning bylaw, if the, if it's under conservation jurisdiction, then the Conservation Commission is the permit granting authority, but if it's not, then it's, the planning board is the permit granting authority.
Okay.
That's it, okay.
Thank you. Page 11 of 19, halfway down the page, "Furthermore, deficiencies noted for the Wildwood roadway will exacerbate flooding conditions in this location. As noted above, significantly more runoff than accounted for will enter Ocean Pines Drive during the intense rain events and may occasionally exceed the capacities of CB6 and CB7 as documented in the impacted residents. That will overflow paths runs through 15 Ocean Pines Drive through 4 and 6 of Alpine Circle, and obviously, we know where it goes from that point there." Now, that there alone is a clear finding of what they're doing. Now, we, I understand there needs to be a final coat that goes on Wildwood Lane. I get that. But we also have explained, back in September of last year, that time is of the essence here. We've waited almost a year. We've seen the road get breached on June 30 from, from Wildwood Lane. And I asked the board last time, and Mr. Udi agreed to it, about even putting simple things like silt socks up on the basins. Now, they put them on two of the basins in Wildwood Lane. The first time they sent you their pictures, you saw, it was pretty much an insult to all of us as how they set them up there. They put them not even big enough to catch water anywhere, and they had them actually behind the catch basins. Now, they said the entrance to five should have a trench drain going there. Well, there's also two catch basins at, at entrance five. Why can't they put silt socks there to catch the water? Are they afraid it's going to overflow the catch basin? They proved that in an event of a large rain event, that it's going to happen. So the residents at 12 now are going to probably feel the effects of what we feel the effects So I'm asking the board again to start, please, take this on to consideration and think of the time behind it. Right now, we might be dodging a bullet tomorrow and Saturday, we hope. It says it's moving west of us, but if that thing decides to take the slightest bit change to the right and it heads east and south, we're going to have this discussion all over again, and I'm going to be ripping my house apart again. Now, Mr. Udi pointed out that there are catch basins that need to be installed, and Mr. Wallace said it as well. And I appreciate that, and I see that. But on the same note, too, we didn't buy our house to have our house become the catch basin for Wildwood Lane. We bought our house because we, we liked the area, we like to have that available to us. JC Engineering proposed to have these catch basins put on an easement between seven and nine. The easement isn't owned by us. We put our own drainage system in when we upgraded our house to support our in-laws that, that are aging, so we can have them live with us, and we can take care of them. We can't take care of them when we have flooding. But the fact that they, that the proposal to put a catch basin in between seven and nine is going to obviously help substantiate and catch the water that should flow down from Alpine Circle, not Wildwood Lane. They suggested putting berms on 15 and 11, which is helpful. But again, you feel a massive surge like we have, it's still going to buck up over that curbing and come down there like a waterfall. I, I know many of you don't get to see the rain events that take place up there, but I live and breathe them every day. And I, I can't express enough my concerns going, going within, actually, the next couple of months coming our way with the rain season. Has there been approving of them potentially paving lot 61 right now? Because they're getting ready to.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not very sure. It's such a deal.
And tell them to mute themselves.
And my next question is, I mean, I know this is passing down a little bit, and this will be my last one, I promise. Has the site been inspected with everything the peer review passed last time with Merrill? Because right now, I drive by that site every day. I live and breathe it every day. I don't see drainage systems going there. I see septic tanks going in, but I don't see leaching pits for the drainage systems going anywhere. And I'm just curious if, if anybody else has gone by to witness what's going on there. And obviously, they've proven it through JC Engineering's peer review, what is going on with the lack of drainage, because they can't provide enough data or enough information for the roof drains, they got the catch basins overflowing, and they can't find these other safety measures to help protect the rest of the residents that even live up there. So again, I ask that we hold them more accountable for their actions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Leclerc. Is there anybody else? No?
Can I briefly respond to that? Because I think something's getting lost in translation here. If you look at page 11 of this gentleman's report, this, item seven, this is what he says. "The drainage infrastructure in Alpine Circle, while constructed in compliance with the 1987 design, is significantly undersized and unable to mitigate the amount of runoff generated in the contributing catchment area. JCE believes this is the primary cause of the flooding that occurs in the vicinity of five through nine Alpine Circle. The originally designed leaching pits, LP1, LP2, on Alpine Circle area, provide approximately 883 cubic feet of storage. During a two-year, 24-hour frequency rain event, so not a big rain event, 3.4 inches, the subcatchment area for LP1 and LP2 on Alpine will generate 1,742 cubic feet and 2,700 cubic feet of stormwater, respectfully, just from the contributing roadway area, not including driveway roofs." That is the problem. So it's, there is always going to be runoff, some amount of runoff, and there is runoff in this community, and the Wildwood Land runoff is going to be corrected. The problem is, what catches any rain and runoff in the Alpine Circle area is insufficient to hold it, even in the most minor of storms. And you don't ask me, ask the engineer. That's what his report says. So I'm not trying to chastise that gentleman who came up here who's complaining of legitimate problems with his property. I'm not trying to make him a villain. He's not. But I think what's getting lost in translation here is, what's supposed to catch the rain in this micro neighborhood of Alpine Circle is not big enough. And they own that, and my client had nothing to do with it. So this innuendo that hold my client accountable or blame, you know, I just want to distill that, that there's. I just want to distill that, that there's no factual or expert basis to do that. Yes, we need to finish Wildwood Lane. We would love to. We've been trying to finish this project for many, many months, and frankly, no disrespect. This board's doing its job, but this process has slowed that construction down. With the last thing this gentleman said about paving in lot sixty-one, I just want to remind and put it on the record. We just went through this with Merrill Engineering, that there is a drainage plan in place that must be done pursuant to your permit before occupancy permits are issued. That basically means that not a drop of water is going to leave lot sixty-one, which is above and beyond the applicable standards. That's what Merrill said in its report. So, you can chuckle at that, but read Merrill's report because that's what it says. And so, I just want to, and then Mr. Rand got up here and said that somehow this report is saying that there is construction defects in the condominium build-out. That's not what this report says at all. And what Mr. Rand fails to mention is that his association has a lawsuit against my client right now, where they're alleging those deficiencies, and they haven't even brought forward an expert to articulate what the deficiencies are. And that case has been going on for some time. So, we're a little sick and tired of these allegations that are not supported by anything being brought against us, and we want to finish this project. But I just want to underscore that the issues with Alpine Circle, and you can speak to this and correct me if I have this wrong, are because the situation there to catch water is grossly undersized. And that has nothing to do with Hebb or their project. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Udi. Somebody, a gentleman in the back? Yep, you with the glasses on your head, on top of your head, not in your eyes. I should remember your name, but I forgot. I'm sure you will.
Frost.
Mr. Frost?
Craig Frost, seventeen Ocean Pines Drive. I just want to make a couple of comments. Number one, Ocean Pines development is an open space development, not an affordable development. I don't know where that came from. And that came from a special permit from the Town of Born Planning Board, which, in essence, when Mr. Hebb bought the rights to develop Wildwood Lane, he bought the special permit and all responsibilities that go with that special permit. I think that's something that Mr. Hebb's attorney is missing, is that he bought that responsibility. He owns that special permit, and he's responsible for everything that's going on there. So, I had a couple of questions. I don't know if the engineer from J.C. Engineering can answer them or if the planning board can or not. During the course of everything that's been going on Wildwood Lane, there's been a tremendous change in all the plans and everything that's been going on. The size of the buildings, the amount of the asphalt has all changed. Including, to my knowledge, I don't believe that there was any plan in nineteen eighty-seven that was taking all the roof water off of specific buildings and the asphalt water from specific driveways and parking areas and putting it into the catch basin. Subsequently, in order from Mr. Hebb to make his bigger and better buildings and complete as many and as much as he could, the drainage basin between two Wildwood and twelve Ocean Pines Drive has changed shape dramatically. In my view, when I look at it and I look at plans that I have, I think the cubic footage of the sizing of the basin has reduced substantially so that they could change the placement of the buildings, make the buildings bigger, change the direction and dimensions of the building. Thereby, you're adding more water to a smaller area, creating more of a problem. I'm not an engineer. I can't look at the hard numbers and say, so much water is going to go here or there. That's the engineer's responsibility. When I look at it and I go, okay, in nineteen eighty-seven, this was approved, and this is the sizing that they had. But now, you reduce the sizing, you add the volume of water going into it. It's going to create a problem. The water's got to go somewhere. They made their catch basin narrower, maybe deeper. I'm not sure if it's deeper or not. But now, you're putting more volume of water going into a smaller drainage area. There's no way around it. There's no way around that. And I would question, can anyone tell me, I don't know, did I see, Ken's here as well. I don't know if someone can answer. Have there been variances issued for the development? Would anybody be able to speak on that? I mean, I was going through, I have a big, thick stack of paperwork. I was going through it today, and I'm looking at it. And going back to twelve Ocean Pines, the buildings being built at twelve. And my contention long has been that the, I'm looking for the word, the lot coverage, the size of the buildings, is supposed to be at twenty percent, and they were pushing that. And I think Ms. Copeland, I saw a letter from her that said, no, it's closer to thirteen or fifteen percent. I saw a letter from Corinne Moore that brought up, on twelve Ocean Pines Drive, the fact that they were at twenty-three percent or twenty-two percent of coverage, lot coverage, and that the building heights were supposed to be, according to the special permit, no higher than twenty-eight feet. But twelve Ocean Pines Drive was twenty-nine point six feet. And I'm wondering how they can do that without getting a variance? If there hasn't been a variance? Can anybody speak to that? And I'm not sure, and my understanding is, because you're the special permitting authority, the planning board, that the variance would be coming from this board, I believe. Am I correct about that, or would that be a zoning issue?
I know. We'd have to research it. We don't have, well, we don't have all the files here.
I know. You're still researching my complaint that I filed six months ago, seven months ago. Let me just look and see. And I would make, as some other people had already said, the undersizing of the drainage on Alpine Circle is one thing. And I can understand the engineer's comments about that. But there's an awful lot of water, an awful lot of water that rushes down Wildwood Lane and crosses the road and is not caught in those two catch basins at the bottom, doesn't even touch, doesn't even touch four and five. Bypasses the catch basins on Wildwood Lane, comes right down onto Ocean Pines Drive, and tries to be caught by six and seven. That's too much water for two catch basins to catch. It's just too much. And there's going to be flooding there, and it goes down that hill, and it washes that hill out. Mr. Hebb has paid for replacement and reparations to fix that hill on a couple of occasions, I believe. So, he's well aware that the water's coming down Wildwood Lane and washing that all out and heading down to Alpine Circle. Thank you.
Anybody else? Ma'am?
I figured it's about time I come up here.
Your name for the record?
Kristen Leclair from seven Alpine Circle.
Thank you, Kristen.
I mean, I take offense to the fact that, you know, you're saying that this is all our responsibility and that the development has nothing to do with our flooding problem. I mean, I understand that, you know, if we don't have the capable infrastructure and, you know, I'm not an engineer. I don't understand all of it. But considering that we haven't had major floods like this since, you know, in two thousand and two, then why is this happening after Wildwood Road was developed and after the condominiums have been put in? So, I don't understand how you can say that this is not your fault at all. So, let me just start with that. And I don't know if that's something that J.C. can address, his comments, as far as that goes, trying to say that it's not their fault at all. You know, like I said, I'm not an engineer. I'm an accountant, and I don't understand a lot of the drainage issues. And I completely understand that there's a process, which is what we've been told in every meeting, that just, you know, you've got to go through the process. I see that they're building as fast as they can to get to finish this, and my fear is that they're just trying to wash their hands clean of it. When we met after our last flood, almost a year ago now, we said time was of the essence. We're approaching hurricane season again, and a year later, now, like Tom said, we may have dodged a bullet with this one, but we were a rack watching this thing come up the coast. We were afraid that we were going to get hit with seven or eight inches of rain again. You know, and I want to explain to you how much stress this puts on us. To say that we're nervous every time it rains is an understatement. Sorry. This has had significant impact on our lives. We watch the weather constantly, every single day. We are checking our weather apps to see how many inches of rain we're getting, and we're afraid to make plans. We're afraid to travel. We moved our parents into our house, got a special permit to take care of them. In order to take care of them, Tom sits in his Jeep in the driveway every time it rains when we're having downpours so that he can watch if we start to flood. He goes back and forth to go up to the condos and back down to our house so he can document where the water is coming from. This can't continue much longer before we hit a breaking point. So, I ask that when you make your decisions about who is responsible for how much for this and how this is going to be remedied, that you take this into consideration. The report calls for additional basins to be put on Alpine Circle between our property and our neighbor's property. And I'm concerned about who's responsible for it. We've spent a significant amount of money. When we did our addition, we thought part of putting the in-law addition on, we would solve some of the problem by removing our garage, which is where the water was initially coming in. We added a new tank in our yard. We pitched our driveway. We changed our landscaping. You know, we're not in a position to take on more expenses for this. So, you know, we've been told that there might be opportunities for grants, so we'd like to ask about this. And I guess my main question is, how long does this process take? Because it's been almost a year now. Thank you.
Thank you, Kristen.
Again, Robert Rand, nine B Wildwood Lane. The synopsis that Mr. Wallace provided, for sort of obvious reasons, was sort of heavy on the problems down on Alpine Circle. But I'm assuming you all have the full report in front of you. And there are, what we feel on Wildwood Lane are fairly significant problems also that the full report highlighted, that were not included in the synopsis. And I just wanted to mention one of them on page fourteen of nineteen. Number seventeen indicates that dedicated roof drywells were installed for several buildings on Wildwood Lane. And it lists, one, two, three, four, five different chambers for these. And then it says that maximum precipitation amounts are shown above in the red based static sizing calculations. It appears these systems were designed to handle minimum stormwater flow and capacity would be exceeded during intense or extended rain events. That's something that really affects us living on Wildwood Lane, if the systems can't handle any extended or intense rain events because we have them. So, that might be one of the deficiencies to which I was referring, Mr. Udi.
Udi.
Udi, sorry.
No problem.
It's a difficult name.
Udi.
The other thing I wanted to mention is that I do have copies of our engineer's quick synopsis of this. But we would also, we're planning on getting a fuller assessment of the report from him. And we'd like to share that with you when it comes due. Hopefully, that'll be in the next week or so. So, just wanted to let you know.
I was going to ask you if you could have either your attorney or you yourself forward that to Janet at Town, and we'll keep it in the file.
Sure. Well, I have hard copies here of what I referred to before. But I can also send it to Janet.
The lawyer's here. You know, you read from his memo. I think that's called hearsay. So, we need it directly from the source.
Don't want hearsay. All right.
No, we listened to you. We heard it. But if we get it directly from him, then that's much better.
All right, Mr. Farrell.
Thank you. Anybody else? Mr. Udi?
Just super quick in response to that. Just because the report makes that suggestion, it doesn't make it a deficiency or violative of some kind of stormwater standard. There's no standard issued here in this report that it violates or code or anything like that. Yes, in a perfect world, you'd like everything to be A-plus and perfect for everything, but it doesn't necessarily make it a construction deficiency. And like I said, there's litigation about this, and we'll deal with it. But just because, and to that woman who just spoke just now, again, I want to be clear that we empathize with people who are having problems on Alpine, but that's not something that we did. And there's going to be, when you buy into a residential community, there's going to be construction on lots that are adjacent to you sometimes. And sometimes when that happens, the construction will cause runoff until it's completed. We want to complete construction. But the issue here, again, no matter when this construction is completed or not, what I believe this engineer is saying, and you can ask him, is that once Wildwood Lane is done and crowned properly and everything's done, they're still going to be having significant problems down there whenever there is a rain event because the system that they have to catch the rain is not sufficient. And I would really encourage them to speak with this engineer and talk to him about that because that's something that they bought. That's their land. And they need to deal with it to fix it. And that's not something that my client ever did, ever touched, ever messed up, ever had anything to do with. And I just want to make sure that it's not lost in translation. I strongly urge you guys to talk to each other so that this can be understood. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Leclair, quickly.
Tom Leclair, seven Alpine Circle. With what Mr. Udi just said, I would ask that maybe we could get a true professional opinion then, while Mr. Wallace is here, to kind of give us a synopsis or anything of where he truly feels my flooding issue is coming from.
Right. I get it.
So, I mean, I can get his, we can get his professional opinion right here on record of what his assessment is of where that water might be coming from when we experience the major flooding that we have.
I think he addressed it in his report, and we've got that report.
So, we can't ask him to come up and express that?
He's given his report to us, and you all heard it. So, I mean, there are contributing factors, and I think he highlighted that, so. Thank you. Mr. Frost, did you have something else you wanted to?
Yeah, I do.
Craig Frost, seventeen Ocean Pines Drive. Mr. Udi said, once Wildwood Drive is complete, there won't be a problem. I'm not sure, but it doesn't make any sense to say, I'm going to cause problems for everybody else for ten years or whatever it is, but it'll be all better. It'll be better when it's done. What happens until it's done? What, I don't understand. And the board has said, once Wildwood is paved over. Well, he shouldn't be creating a problem for everybody else prior to. You can't allow somebody and go, okay, I'm going to build this. I'm going to wreck havoc on the neighborhood. Wreck havoc on the neighborhood, cause flooding all over. But don't worry. When I'm all done in a couple of years, it'll be all better. That doesn't make any sense. I don't think there's anything in the building code that allows you, that allows somebody to cause problems, but then, okay, we'll fix it later. Doesn't make sense to me. Doesn't make any sense.
Thank you. Anybody else? Mr., oh.
Mr. Chair, the discussion of Alpine Circle, there seems to be a disagreement about catchments. I understand the water, the official catchment coming down Alpine Circle, but there's a functional catchment coming down Wildwood Circle that appears to cross the crown at Ocean Pines at some point. One inch in twenty-four hours. There is some point where the water crosses the crown at Ocean Pines, becomes a public nuisance. And I guess this is where the discussion of performance bond might be relevant. That is, water should not cross the center line of Ocean Pines Boulevard. And the second question is, can we solve this problem with the finished coat? Can we get a legitimate crown, a two-percent crown? If you look at this, I guess this is LIDAR topo. It actually shows water coming down the center line of Wildwood. It looks flattish. It doesn't look- It looks flattish, it doesn't look crowned. Can we solve that problem by varying the height? Can we finish, can we solve it with the finished coat, including the Cape Cod berms?
Yeah, I mean, that is something that absolutely needs to be done, when the top coat is installed. 2% crown is typical, increasing the height of the Cape Cod berms.
Can we lower the gutter on Ocean Pines, both sides?
You could, yeah. I mean, you can mill down a certain point to reinforce that gutter line. Another part of our report was, at the time this construction would occur, not to raise the grates up to finish a top coat elevation. Keep them where they are, and have the grade of the road, you know, depress towards those basins, rather than bringing them up and kind of, you know, not taking advantage of that as much as you can, so.
So, if we can, if we can prevent water from crossing the center line of Ocean Pines, then you'll see what the true catchment on Alpine Circle is, and whether the problem is inherent, or whether it is an externality.
Correct, yeah. And as in our report, you know, these are, these are two separate issues you can look at. One is the catchment area associated with Alpine Circle only, which, again, is about five acres. It consists of all of Alpine Circle, the road, it consists of all of the driveways, which, most of them are paved driveways in that area. From what we could tell, most of the houses aren't piped to roof drywells, so it is a lot of runoff going towards that low point, just from the properties on Alpine Circle and Ocean Pines Drive, as we expressed. But there is also the issue of Wildwood Lane. The pictures and videos obviously don't lie that there's deficiencies there, and that's an issue that needs to be corrected.
Would you go so far as to recommend a trench drain across the mouth of Wildwood Circle? Is that?
Yeah, I mean, that, trench drains can be difficult to maintain, you know, over time, especially with a lot of traffic. I think you'd probably want to just reinforce the crown and the gutter line of the roadway. And there's always going to be a portion at the apron beyond those two catch basins at the end of Wildwood Lane, that that's going to contribute to the gutter line on Ocean Pines Drive. And I just want to note, too, those two catch basins at the end of Wildwood Lane are connected to the Ocean Pines Drive system. And those two catch basins are piped to one of the manholes that we weren't able to access because it's paved over. So, if there's, if there's one structure that's worth opening up and looking at, it's probably that drain manhole.
Is that numbered on your?
I believe that's drain manhole number one on the, let me, yeah, let me pull that up here.
Anyway, I understand the need for opening that.
Yeah.
Thanks.
Thanks, Doris.
I've just been kind of ruminating on this this whole time, listening to everybody. I can really sympathize with the residents of, you know, everybody here that comes every time. And I can also hear, you know, you and your take on everything, and that makes sense, too, so. But in layman's terms, for me, I guess I am curious, and I don't know if this has already been discussed at length, who knows, but I would really like to know just what the flooding situation was like pre-Wildwood Lane, like before all this construction started, like what were the residents dealing with before that?
Yeah, you'll have to come up.
Tom Leclair, Seven Alpine Circle. We've had the opportunity to speak to a lot of residents in the area that lived in the area prior to all of the construction, and when Alpine Circle was just a road, and when Ocean Pines Drive was just a road, with the houses there, there was no flooding. That's as plain as you can get.
Not at all.
That's as plain as you can get. I've spoken to people that are in construction, I've spoken to people that are excavation, I've spoken to people that have lived in the area the majority of their lives, and from what I understand, and what they told me, that there was no flooding. They used to ride their dirt bikes through that area before it was even a development, and they said there was no signs of water there.
Yeah, I used to chase those dirt bikes.
So, for me, like what I'm having a hard time understanding, just, again, I'm not an engineer, I am trying to understand why it would be on the residents to fix the issue if, when they purchased their homes, it wasn't an issue, and now it is because of Wildwood Lane's construction. Like, I'm just wondering who's going to be taking care of this, like who's remedying all of this? Who's going to be in charge of paying for all of this stuff to be done? Because if it's at all the residents, that doesn't seem fair. I mean, if I were to picture myself as somebody who lives on Alpine, or, you know, one of those roads, I would be furious if that, if I had to pay at all to have any of that done, to fix the flooding issue, because when I purchased my house, it wasn't an issue, now it is because of all this construction going on that's causing issues and flooding.
If I may? There was no reported flooding until 2002 in that area. Wildwood Lane was constructed in 2001. We moved into our house in 2018. We had no flooding at that time either. It wasn't until Wildwood Lane condominiums at, I'm not exactly good with the numbers up there, maybe four, six, eight, and 12? I mean, maybe that's the numbers? I'm not exactly sure how they go in sequence up there. It wasn't until it basically got up around the cul-de-sac is when we got our first major flood, and that was 2021.
Okay.
I personally showed my daughter a home on Alpine Circle prior to 2018, and advised her not to pursue it because of signs of flooding. But I also understand that the rain events we have in the last few years have been much greater than were in those years prior, which I believe are continuing. But those are the two observations that I'd like to share.
Thank you. On June 30th of this year, we received water, a rain event, with 1.12 inches of water in 45 minutes. Water breached Ocean Pines Drive from Wildwood Lane, and it did breach 15 Ocean Pines driveway. It did make its way down, started making its way down their driveway, and it did flood out five Alpine Circles shed, and that little catch area in there. Luckily enough, the rain stopped because it never made it to my yard. So, that's 1.12 inches of water. That's not a 25-year rain event. That's not even, I'm not the expert at rain events, but I would imagine that's not even a five-year rain event. So, I guess you've got to look at the situations, and they're saying that it's going to happen when they finish. And again, like Mr. Frost said, when they finish. I've gotten four floods inside of two years. I've had to gut my house four times in two years, because I've had to put it back together. I had to displace my in-laws last year after they moved in in May, because of 22 inches of water that was in the first floor. That didn't count what was in the basement, the driveway, the yard, over at Nine, in their garage, and everywhere else. It was, I understand it was a significant rain event, but 1.12 inches of water is not a significant rain event. And my catch basin wasn't even anywhere near full capacity at that time. So, I guess, trying to put the blame on us as far as our catch basin not being of proper depth and ability to take on the water, that could very well be, but that was based on 1987 standards. What's happening today is 1.12 inches of water coming down a hill that's flooding from a development that's being built as we speak, and I don't think that's equivalent to a 25-year storm, like they're saying.
Anybody else?
Hi, James Corcoran, Nine Alpine.
What's the last name again?
Corcoran, C-O-R-A-N. I just want to mention that there's a lot of work being done at the condos right now, and it appears, I have a lot of people where I used to live that are in construction, and it appears that once the project is done, they just wipe their hands of everything. And the condo association's going to own it, and there's going to be still issues done on Alpine. Is there any way you can put money into an escrow account, the contractor himself, before you sign off on this? So, it's not going to happen in the next few months, I know that. I understand what you people are going through, and it takes time. We're trying to be fair, everybody's trying to be fair. But I wish there was a way that, before the town signs off on those condos, that money is put in an escrow account to cover the cost of the problems that you had here tonight.
Okay. I'm not going to go into specifics, but I will say that I have been in contact through Mr. Udi with the Hebs, and we are working on something like that. I'm not going to go into specifics, because we haven't done that yet, but, and we are holding money at the time to cover the top coat of pavement on Wildwood, so that they go away, we have enough to get it done. All right, thank you. So, we are looking at it. So, nobody else? Any other questions? No? Okay, I'm just going to ask the board, we don't have to accept it, but just quickly, we'll go down the line on accepting this report from J.C. Engineering, and we'll put it into the file. I don't think it needs to be as far as a motion, but John, would you? Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Absolutely.
Catherine?
Yes.
Okay. Liz?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. All right, we're going to accept that report in there, we'll put it in. We will be working on this as we go forward. We did have a meeting in Town Hall today. Jen, myself, building inspector, town administrator, so we're not, we're not just sitting idly by. We are working on this. The town did spend considerable amount of money to have this report done, so that, you know, as I said to you last week, or the last meeting, we're laymen, just like you folks, and we require these engineers to give us their best information and go from there, so. We are working on it, and we'll keep you informed. I think the next meeting will be 27th?
August 22nd.
22nd of August? And is it on there?
No.
Okay. We don't have them on our agenda for the 22nd of August yet, but that may change, so. Just keep an eye on it, so you all can be here at the next meeting if it comes up, if it gets put on the schedule. Nothing else is before us? Make a motion.
Motion to adjourn.
Second. Motion made in second. All of us in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.